To the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment, sir. First up on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Do we have a motion?
Move that we approve the agenda.
Motion been made. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Up next is recognition, Dr. Austin.
Mr. Kidwell, if you want, we'll go down and recognize students who have participated in the Kingsport Times News drawing card. Sit around the 4H. Yes. Every month, we recognize students who have submitted and been published in Kingsport Times News. So this is recognition of our students. These are available on board docs if you're interested in that. Typically, we have a write-on contest also, but that's not something that some will say is in play during the summer. So these are students we want to recognize from Flatwoods that participated and were recognized against by the Kingsport Times News this month. And the first is Vincent Ashley, Michaela Bergen, Travis Eldridge, Megan Flinger, A.J. Huff. Come up and get your certificate. Congratulations. Kyrie Johnson, Brecken Nempti, Wesley Scott, Beau Smith, and Jordan Wyatt. And from Jonesville Middle, we have Take of Healy. So for the students that are not here, we forward those to the schools and they will get them to the students. So again, gentlemen, congratulations. I think Mr. Fields is going to take a quick picture and so the school board knows the A-plus certification is something we actually look for when we're hiring technicians to work on network type of equipment. So this young man's already got credentials in place that we look for when we are hiring. So, Mr. Grimes, nice job. Excellent work.
Yeah, if you don't want to. Good job.
Can I get a picture? Sure. Stand over there.
Thank you. Thank you.
So when you guys want to speak, we will know.
Come on, guys, take a picture of you. Sorry, guys, we'll leave this.
Okay, next up, we want to recognize Bethany Davis, Mason Glass, and Zach Lane. Are they here? Okay, then I'm going to speak briefly to what these three students did. Bethany Davis won the vocal category. They're members of the Lee County 4H Club. I want to read from a statement here. They won first, she won the vocal category at the 4H Share the Fun Competition at Virginia Tech. So this was a state competition and Mason Glass won the instrumental category, playing a drum solo. And Zach Lane won the combination category with his musical performance and guitar solo. So we have some very artistic, very musical students and performing well at, I will say, summer events when they're off. I'll say hats off to the students and the families for supporting those endeavors. So congratulations to all these students and look forward to seeing what you do throughout the remainder of the next school year. So congratulations.
Well, up next is public comment. Do we have any public comment tonight? If not, we'll move on to consent agenda.
I make the motion that we approve the consent agenda consisting of the following. Approval of minutes of the June 8th, 2017 regular meeting. Approval of claims and expenditures. Approval of the Head Start Grant number 03CH3460, cost of living adjustment. Approval to apply for the 2017-2018 Head Start Grant number 3CH3460/4. Approval of field trips, the FBLA National Competition to Anaheim, California, and the Lehigh School Volleyball Team to Coastal Carolina University. Approval of the following VSBA policy updates to the school board policies. BVE, unexpired term fulfillment. BBFA, conflict of interest and disclosure of economic interest. BDA, regular school board meetings. BDB, special school board meetings. BDC, closed meetings. BDCAD, calling and certification of closed meetings. BDD, electronic participation in meetings from remote locations. BDDA, notification of school board meetings. BDDC, agenda preparation and dissemination. BDDG, minutes. CBCA, disclosure statement requirement of superintendent. DJG, vendor relations. EVV, personnel training, viral infections. EEA, student transmission services. EEAC, school bus safety program. GAA, school employee conflict of interest. GBEV, staff weapons in school. GCVC, employment of family members. GCPD, professional staff discipline. IA, instructional goals and objectives. IGAD, career and technical education. IGAH, family life education. IGAH, driver education. IGVC, family and parent and family engagement. IGBF, English learners. IGVI, advanced placement classes and special programs. IICB/IIICC, community resource persons, school volunteers. IKFD, alternate paths to attaining standard units of credit. JECA, admission of homeless children. JFC-R, standards of student conduct. JHCD, administering medicines to students. JRCA, student service providers use of student personnel information. KVA, request for information. LC, charter schools.
Thank you, Ms. Jesse. Motion's been made. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Up next is reports of the board. Do we have any reports? If not, we'll move on to reports of the vision superintendent, Dr. Austin.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, want to provide you an update on the one-to-one initiative that we're going to be implementing at the two high schools this year. We want to recognize the efforts that Mr. Fields has put forth in ordering and getting devices set up and also Cindy Nicodam, but then she is one of our instructional technology resource teachers. But with us tonight, we have Jill Graham and Kristy Howard, who are going to share some information with you about the documents that we've been in the process of creating to support this implementation. And I just want to say hats off to these ladies and to Mr. Fields and his team because they've done an incredible job this summer developing this. So with that being said, Ms. Graham, Ms. Howard, appreciate you being here this evening. Of course, yours.
It's okay if people stand here. I know the teacher's way up behind me. Makes me nervous, always has. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Jill Graham. I have spent 15 years teaching eighth graders at Johnson Middle School and I'm very excited to be moving on to a new chapter in my career. This is Kristy Howard. She will talk to you in a minute. And Cindy Nicodam is on her way back traveling from a cyber conference, cyber security conference at Virginia Tech. That's the reason she's not here with us. First of all, we wanted to let the board know how did we get to this device? So we conducted a focus group at Lehigh and Thomas Walker on June 15th with our summer school students. And we provided them three different devices that they could choose from to get their opinions. There was about 13 students in each focus group and they had three Chromebook samples, the HPG14, the Lenovo N21, and the Lenovo N23 Yoga. We told them, since they were in summer school, to try out a new device because it's a program they were using to log in like they would, check their email, and of course, they went to YouTube to see if it's going to be speed enough for their thing. So they spent about five minutes with each device and then they completed a short Google Form Survey that Ms. Kristy created so we could record the results. So what were the results? The biggest thing they really, really liked, and I don't have my glasses on, so I've got it here. Long battery life and speed. They're teenagers, that's what they're worried about. They don't care about the brand. Size of the device, the really only noticeable size was your bigger athletes, they liked the bigger devices. But for most part, you know, as long as it's got a good battery, it's easy to use and it's speedy, that's what they're looking for. So they liked this model, the HPG14. It was a little bit larger than what I have in my hand and that was probably the biggest thing they liked. The second one, again, they liked the size of the screen and the size of the keyboard. But the other ones said it would be too far to carry. Then the next one was Lenovo N21. Yeah, they weren't really impressed with it. Its major features were it had a handle that you could carry it and it had a camera that would flip either way. Then we got to the third one, Lenovo N23 Yoga. And as you can see, they really liked it and here's the reason why. It folds into a tablet and it's touchscreen. And yes, I liked it so well, I traded my old Chromebook in today. So they really, that's what they liked, was the touchscreen. And we did some research and they are really durable. We actually had one fall off a desk, they was working on it, it worked fine, so we're proud of testing them as we go. But even some of them were a little concerned, would they hold up? And from the research we've done, yes, they will. So you can see out of the three, this is the one, 81% chips. So thanks to you all and Freddie, we were able to get these ordered. And actually, there are 1,200 of them currently at the vocational school.
I'm going to bring one around and let you all take a look at it.
So we are excited. We've been managing these. We have almost 800 of them managed.
I want to take a look at it.
And then we have 400 to go.
The main thing you'll notice when you look at it, they have nice rubberized edges. They're built to last. And a lot of people have asked if we're going to put a cover on them or buy a cover, but they're actually plant-chilled on the outside to prevent it take a beating. They're designed for education.
They meet military specs, too. This is the Chromebooks that the military's buying. So they meet a five-foot drop standard that sling in and out.
While y'all are looking at it, I'm going to kind of explain what we're doing, what we've done since we've selected them, what we're in the middle of right now, and then kind of our plan, how we're going to get them in the students' hands.
Okay, before you move on, you want to field some questions on the device before?
Yeah, if there are any, for sure.
So when we voted by all students, this is what they're going to get?
Yes.
Okay. There going to be a tracking on them or a barcode to keep up with them?
Their barcodes are tracking and we have to maintain SIPA compliance, too. So even if they take these devices home, they still route everything back through our web filter so that they're even...
So every time you can see where this device is?
Yes.
SIPA Child Air Net Protection Act.
So our IBOSS filter follows them home. There'll be no social media, there'll be no inappropriate sites at school or at home or at the library or wherever they decide to take it.
Right, I can't look at Facebook online.
No, sure can.
If you flip it over, the barcode is on the bottom of those. I thought that might be the safest place so they're not so inhabited to pick them up.
And when you start dealing with the state police and FBI, there's other identifiable information in these devices that they can track accordingly if anything were to disappear or sold in a phone shop.
Right. And we can disable the device to the point that no one can even log into it. So if it's reported missing or lost, the first thing we'll do is disable it to where nobody can get on it.
And the only account that are allowed on it begin with Irving County school accounts. So if someone were to find one at the Walmart and try to log into it, they wouldn't be able to do that.
What about the price difference between the three?
Between the three, there was roughly $35 per difference in between the three, even buying the quantities that we did. So, I mean, it was fairly negligible. Some of the others that were out there went up over 300. These were on the lower end of the 200 per. So that's kind of what we took was what was within our budget range and then what was the best of, or what the kids liked best of.
Mr. Fields, correct me if I'm wrong, but we bid off a state contract and they're going to beat the state contract?
Yes. They're actually cheaper than the state contract.
And they got them here to us quickly. We got them speedier than we were expecting. Any more device questions?
Just, I'm going to ask this logistical question. Chromebook is a brand that it can be manufactured by several different companies, correct?
That's correct. It's just like Windows or Apple.
Wonder some companies? I mean, we've got HPs for our teachers.
We've got HPs.
This is Lenovo. Who else?
Dell makes one, HP, Lenovo, Acer, Asus. Everybody's making them now because it's a, they're popular and they're reasonably priced.
Sorry to put you on the spot, but thank you.
All righty, so after we selected our device, we ordered 1,200 of those Lenovo N23 Yogas on June 19th. And the breakdown was we based it off of last year's enrollment, 738 for Lehigh School students and faculty, 355 for Thomas Walker students and faculty. And what we are doing is trading the faculty's current HPG14s with the Yogas. And the reason we're doing that, we thought, you know, if students ran into issues, we wanted the teachers to have the same device in their hands. The devices that the teachers had last year, the G14s, they are going to become part of our loaner cards. So we will have some loaners at the school, 70, I think 62 are going to Lehigh and 44, plus all the ones that the faculty return. And that's in case a student has damage to theirs or something goes wrong and they need to turn theirs in for repair, they can take a loaner. Or even students that opt not to take the Chromebook home with them, they can loan one while they're in the building and use them. So the teachers can still have a full classroom full of Chromebooks, even if every student hasn't opted to have one. And they showed up on Monday, on July 10th. We got 1,200 deliveries to Lehigh Career and Technical Center. It is, I think, nine pallets full of Chromebooks are sitting up there. Network manager technicians and the ITRTs have started enrolling them. We worked on them Tuesday, Wednesday, and today. And we're hoping by the end of next week, we'll have all of them enrolled. All right, so once we get everything enrolled, the big question is how are we going to get them in the hands of the students? Parents are definitely going to have to sign some agreements. And so we thought the best way to get with the parents was to start it back to school night. So we're going to be presenting at both Lehigh and Thomas Walker's back to school night, showing the device and then also being available to answer questions. If parents are ready, they can sign the device agreement that night. And then the parents or the students who have signed devices on file will be getting them the first week of school. So depending on how many sign away that night, and we have to get managed before we show it to school the first week, we're hoping to get all of those out by Friday, the first week of school. From there, we know there'll be some students whose parents don't make it out to back to school night. We're going to hopefully send that out electronically on the school's website and the Facebook site so parents can review it. And then we're also going to do some grade level assemblies. So we're going to meet with all the students in their grade levels. We're going to explain to them, you know, all of the agreements and responsibilities that go with their Chromebook. We're going to show them the device, let them look at it, and then we're going to send those agreements home with them from those sessions. They're going to bring them back to their homeroom teachers. ITRTs are going to be at Lehigh and Thomas Walker for the entirety of August, collecting those forms on a daily basis and then returning the next day with devices for those who have signed agreements. We do have a policy that we've been spending some time on and you guys have that in the board docs. And then we have the user agreement, which is going to be what the parents will sign to agree to all the responsibility that comes with those devices. And the student will sign as well. And I think you guys have a copy of that one to look at. All right, we know there's a lot of information in that policy and it really is, we wanted to cover every base. We know there are a lot of what ifs with the devices and the more we think about it, more what ifs are coming up. So we know you guys will probably have questions about kind of how we're planning to do things and we've addressed as many what ifs as we can think of, but if there are more, we'll add some more to the policy. Are there any questions?
Just briefly for the crowd, if my son went in eighth grade, Thomas Walker takes this thing home and busted it into 100 pieces, what happens?
Well, we have, the policy is currently written, any intentional, any intentional damage will be covered by the family by signing the agreement. As it's currently written, the county is going to cover the first accidental damage. But anything after that will not be covered. But then I think there's a plan in place or starting to be developed where we're going to look at some in-house insurance.
And we discussed that the first one, if it's an accidental drop, then that's something we'll pick up and notify the parents that the next time the cost will be on them, whether it's replacement or the cost of the repairs. The second time, we're going to offer optional $25 insurance that if a parent chooses to pay $25 of insurance, if it happens again, then basically there will be no cost to the parent on the second incident, on the third incident. And I will say, any that happened after that, then it's going to be the cost of the repair or the cost of the replacement of the device, so.
And if they go be on three, we're not, they're going to lose the privilege to take the Chromebook and stay at the school.
We'll start checking them out at the school so that way it doesn't impact their instructional opportunities.
There's some things that are covered on warranty though for a year.
For the first year, we, yeah.
If it's my Chromebook don't work, then there's a hardware malfunction, the touchscreen doesn't work, whatever. We can ship those back. We'll have replacements on site where we can issue them out, replace the device, and get it sent into warranties.
If I decide I want to drive my truck over top of it to see if it's indestructible, that's not an accident. That will be a replacement cost.
And we do, and once it gets to the point where they're paying for it out of pocket, we do have a list that's broken down by replacement parts. So depending on what part they damaged or what part gets damaged, the costs may differ depending on what needs to be replaced.
And again, really want to compliment staff on the amount of time that they spent researching other school divisions that have been doing this, contacting other school divisions, what's working there. And I think they've done an incredible job of taking that and making it appropriate for Lee County so that this was not a just sit down and brainstorm something. They actually went to some school divisions that are being very successful with this and found things that might work for us in our community, so.
And that's the ITRTs. They've done a great job.
Yes. Okay. Any other questions from the board? Ladies, certainly appreciate what you do and I look forward to this rolling out in August.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The other question before you roll.
Okay.
Are we going to be doing training for teachers about how to integrate these instructional? I know the answer to that, but I'm...
Yes. We're planning to do a short before-school training, but then we're also developing a Google certification course that will allow teachers to get Level 1 certified, which covers all Google apps.
We hope that you will allow us to talk to the principals at their principal's meeting in August because they really have to be the ones to get the teachers engaged. And we're hoping that we can help them with lesson plans using Google Classroom so all lesson plans are submitted with uniformity and they're not getting somebody emailed some of it, you know, because we had some problems with that last year.
And we know it's a trickle-down effect. If the principals are excited about the Chromebooks and make it important to the teachers, the teachers will make it important to students and the students will have that device and they'll know that they need their device and need it ready to go every day.
And we're meeting with principals next week and this is an investment by the board, not just in devices, but also in the support of instruction, making sure that we would meet students where they are and trying to create a 21st century learner, so. Thank you again. Next up, wanted to make sure that you're aware, start of the school year is hard to believe, less than a month away, August 9th, we will be starting. I wanted to make sure that's on everyone's radar. If you're interested in going around to the schools on the first day, let me know. We'd be glad to ride you around, of course, to and to town, but if you are interested in visiting schools, let me know. Lastly, we have an operations update. I'm not going to read this to you, but this is work that Mr. Early and his staff have been working on for the past two months. Of course, during the summer is when we get to do some bigger projects. So some of those projects take a little more time than this morning. Crew was down in Rose Hill building a ramp. So it's been some of our bigger projects they've been working on, so I wanted to make sure that you're aware of what else is going on in the vision at this point. Any questions?
Okay, Mr. Chair. Up next, unfinished business. Do we have any unfinished business? If not, we'll move on to action and discussion items. Action item A, if any, to approve disposal of surplus property for school board policy D and disposal of surplus items. Do we have a motion?
I make the motion we approve disposal of surplus property per SB and D and disposal of surplus items.
Motion's been made. I'll second it. All in any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Up next is B, action if any, to approve VSBA policy update to school board policy GC professional staff. Do we have a motion?
If I could speak to this real quickly, one of the things that I wanted to point this out, this is part of the VSBA update to the code of Virginia. There were some changes this year from the General Assembly. That allows the school board to waive licensing requirements for individuals who are looking to teach career and technical education courses. So this is something that's very substantial to being able to offer jobs to individuals who are transitioning from, I must say, a career into the teaching profession. So this is something I wanted to make sure that you're aware of. We have that latitude now, which I think is great for the General Assembly. Administration recommends approval.
I move that we approve VSBA policy update to SBP GC professional staff.
Motion's been made.
I'll second.
With a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next is C, action if any, to approve VSBA policy update to school board policy for SBP JED, student absences, excuses, and dismissals.
Again, some minor changes here from the code of Virginia, but the big reason I wanted to point this out is we will be meeting with principals next week to work on absences, excuses. Attendance is going to be one of the things that we work on a lot this year. We're going to make sure that we communicate and inform parents about attendance and the importance, because I'm convinced if we can get our students in the seats, our teachers can teach them. So administratively, we're going to make that a priority and we will be adopting some superintendent regulations to go with this policy. Wanted to just take an opportunity to mention that because we talked about attendance all year and that's going to be a point of emphasis from date one, so. Administration recommends approval.
Make the motion we approve the SVA policy update to SBP JED, student absences, excuses, and dismissals.
Second.
Motion's been made with a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next is item D, action if any, to approve VSBA policy update to SBP JGDA, disciplining students with disabilities.
This is a change in VSBA policy that reflects what we procedurally have been doing for years. There's something called a manifestation here that if a student with disability is involved in a discipline-related incident and it's related to their disability, there's certain regulations that we have to abide by. And this puts it in school board policy much more clearly than it has been. So this is a good thing in my opinion, but again, it's nothing changing procedurally what we do, it's just putting into policy what we've been doing, so. Administration recommends approval.
I move we approve the SVA policy update to SBP JGDA, discipling students with disabilities.
Second.
Motion's been made with a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next is E, action if any, to approve VSBA policy update to SBP, KBA-E, rights and responsibilities.
An update here on Code of Virginia, this is related to the Freedom of Information Act, and this is really putting into school board policy, again, what we procedurally have been doing. But this really puts into force, I must say, clearly communicates to our community what FOIA is, and what is expected from us, what is expected of the person who makes the request. This is, again, just putting into school board policy what's already been in Code of Virginia for years, so administration recommends approval.
I move that we approve VSBA policy update to SBP, KBA-E, rights and responsibilities.
Second.
Motion's been made with a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next is A, action if any, to approve VSBA policy update to SBP, LBD, home instruction.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, wanted to point out a policy update, and as Ms. Van Zandt has pointed out, the major change in this policy is, as you can see, the underlying portion of where we have to notify parents about the opportunity to take the ACT, SAT, and notify those parents in a timely fashion. One of the biggest reasons I wanted to point this out is in the second, the third paragraph, where it talks about notification of parents. We will be notifying parents this year, it says, "Any parent who elects to provide home instruction at Lewis School attendance shall annually notify the superintendent, no later than August 15th, if the parent intends to so instruct." I'm not going to read the rest of that to you, but we will be contacting parents in the coming weeks that they need to notify us of their intent to continue with home instruction. We have not done that, I asked, but we're going to be doing that. So you may be getting some phone calls, just wanted to make you aware of the policy, as well as the change in policy, but also administratively, what we're going to be doing in the coming weeks, so. Administration recommends approval.
Make a motion we approve the SBA policy update to SBP, LBD, home instruction.
Second.
Motion's been made with a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Up next is G, action if any, to approve the school board policy GA-SBR, employee conduct.
This is a locally-developed board regulation. This is not a VSBA update. Have coordinated with Mr. Sturgill, and gone through some different conduct-related items here. As you can see, there are listed employee conduct, standards of conduct, and discipline philosophy, conduct outside of the workplace, staff-student relations, and then school board policy and regulations. This sets some clear expectations in place for staff, and this is something that pending board approval, we're communicating to principals and making sure that we communicate this to all staff as far as expectations. This is clearly defining some expectations that I think the school boards had in place, but puts it in policy in a manner that's much more clearly stated. So, Mr. Sturgill, you got anything you want to?
I don't have anything to add, but it's pretty clear cut as far as the word.
Administration recommends approval.
Make the motion we approve SBP, GA-PR, employee conduct.
Second.
Motion's been made with a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next is H, action if any, to authorize the vision superintendent to fill vacancies existing or occurring between July 14th, 2017, through August 10th, 2017. I'll make that motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Up next is board comments. Do we have any board comments? I'd like to congratulate all you guys that's come out tonight. Apologize for having said through all these policy updates, it's boring, but good job, everybody. Anybody else? Up next is closed session. Do we have a motion to go in closed session?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion going to closed session to discuss Personnel Code of Virginia 2.2-3711A1, and Penning and Threatening Litigation Code of Virginia 2.2-3711A7.
Motion's been made, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are now in closed session.